We welcome you back. We will now begin council time. This is Wednesday, August 3rd. We've just completed an excellent work session on the medical examiner's office fee schedule, which will be coming in the form of an ordinance and then in the budget in the following weeks. But that was a very informative session, but we now turn to council time and we begin with public comment. So if there is anyone who is present in the hearing room who wishes to speak on any agenda item of today's council time, but only on those agenda items for today's council time, please indicate to staff or if you're calling in star three or on your computer, the raised hand icon. Staff, is there any member of the public who wishes to speak?
I do not see anyone, Chair, no, not in person or online.
Okay, thank you so much. Old business. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes of July 20?
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes for July 20. Any changes or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion is passed unanimously. New business. We start with item 3.1 on the Regional Toll Advisory Committee. I don't know, Kathleen, would you like to introduce this or would you prefer that I do?
I can do a quick introduction and of course, Chair, you can add some information. So the Chair received some information and the ODOT is requesting or inviting Clark County to participate on a new Regional Toll Advisory Committee. It's anticipated that this group, this committee will meet monthly and maybe more initially beginning in, well, it says beginning in July 2022. And due to the fact that this is not part of your normal committees that have already been discussed, it will be up to the council on one, if you want to have a counselor and then two, if so, who that counselor would be. So Chair, you can certainly add any context based on your understanding on this request.
Their first meeting has been changed. It is going to be August 24 and it will be from 9:00 AM to 11:30, which is a Wednesday, not particularly convenient time for those of us with council time agendas, but it is held in Oregon because this is an ODOT committee and it is held at their headquarters. Counsel, what are your feelings about participating on this as one of 24 members, but Clark County being invited to be one?
Madam Chair, I think it's important that we have a voice there. The timing, because of our council time, as you just mentioned, is really unfortunate. The one question I have is, how long did they anticipate they're going to meet for? What's the end date? I didn't catch that.
They don't have an end date per se, but anticipate it going until there's resolution to the three toll projects in the Portland metro area that are being discussed now. So that might go for a while. In fact, we might find it that we need to change members who participate over time. I don't know if it is a long time indeed.
Well, I would nominate Dick Rylander to be on the committee as long as he can be.
Dick, would you be willing to accept that nomination?
I would.
In that event, I'll second that nomination. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of Dick being our representative on the Regional Toll Advisory Committee, please say aye.
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 Aye. Those opposed? It is unanimous and thank you, Dick, for your service on that. Kathleen, I'll let them know today, as I indicated to them previously, that is, at the immediate conclusion of this meeting, I'd let them know if there was a representative and who it is. So I'll be happy to do that. Next, we turn to ARPA funding. And actually, I would like to begin before our staff report by inviting any counselors with additional requests that you wish to add to the list of the requests to make those known now so that we have a full bit of information before us as it's considered.
Madam Chair.
Counsel Rylander.
I would like to add an item for council's consideration to the ARPA request list. This is associated with the development of the Aquatic Center in Battleground Washington area by the YMCA. Council may remember that this goes back several years. There have been ongoing communications, COVID threw, like many things, a monkey wrench in. Subsequently, here's what's happened. The YMCA has purchased acreage in the city of Battleground and completed that purchase and has paid for that completely. They are currently engaged in discussions at the direction of the Battleground City Council with the city manager to determine what opportunities and possibilities would exist. The previous proposal, which is would be continuing that they made was a provision for $1 million of ARPA funding, but I would propose that if we entertain this, that it would be contingent on the following. Contingent on the city of Battleground participating in the project. Number two, the YMCA obtaining state and federal funding necessary to complete the project and that all funding be arranged no later than December 31st of 2024. And so what we would be doing is if we move down this path is in essence providing a letter of support, pledging $1 million so long as all of the contingencies and conditions are met. The importance of this is significant in that this allows the why to not only continue the discussions with the city of Battleground, showing the county's public partner, private partnership support, but also gives them a leg up in talking with the state and the federal funding sources as well. So I would ask that we consider adding this to the list of options for the use of ARPA funds. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Rylander, and if whoever has the access to that spreadsheet that we're listing the projects on, if you would please add that. And I would also request that in the minutes, the two contingencies that you outlined, counselor, be included in the minutes, just for clarity and that they continue on. Are there any additional requests for funding that council wishes to add?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Counsel Medvedji.
So I thank Counsel Rylander for teeing that up. That was number one on my list. As you know, I've been working with the YMCA for a number of years on this project. And I, so that was number one. I did want to just add a couple comments to it because, you know, all along this ARPA money was going to be a quick impact, short term, something that was not necessarily going to be sustainable in the long run. So it was a quick impact and hopefully we would get the biggest bang for those dollars in the long term. And so this public-private partnership falls squarely within that. It is a regional asset that would serve more than the battleground area. It would be a greater battleground area. And I had in prior discussions with them, not only on financing packages, and they've done a lot of work on looking for funding streams, but I had a lot of questions about equity. You know, so if it was a public partnership with them, you know, how does it serve the greater public, especially those that may not be able to afford to join this facility, whether to use the swimming pool or other gym, whatever they end up having. And they do have a very robust program that does provide for financial relief for those citizens that may not otherwise be able to afford it. And in the long run, this is one of those long-term projects. Once built, it is there and the community will enjoy it for decades to come. So I am very much in support of it. I wanted to also add, I've mentioned it before, in our internal committee on that first round of 2 million that we allocated to small businesses and nonprofits. We weren't able to service all the nonprofits that had applied and we were, at least within the committee, hopeful that there would be a second year round in some amount for nonprofits. But additionally, because they really were apples and oranges, too hard to grade against one another, there were a number of small businesses that really didn't make the cut at all. Small businesses did not see many of these grants out of that first round. So we were hopeful that there would be a round specifically for small businesses that hadn't otherwise benefited from any ARPA or COVID relief money over the last couple of years. So basically, I would tee that up as two separate line items. A second round for nonprofits, a second round for small businesses. And I was thinking in terms of at least 1 million for each category. Lastly, I thought that we had discussed this previously and that there was a placeholder for broadband. And I see that as an under outside request, but when I had talked to Mark Gasaway a couple of weeks ago, I wasn't clear on whether it is already in the allocations. It sounds like it is not. It is just on this list as a proposal. So I did want to make sure that broadband is included. I'm looking at it right now on the screen. So I see it's listed, but I don't believe it had any money allocated yet. And I thought we had agreed that there would be money allocated, but I think I was mistaken in that. So anyway, those are the lists, small lists that I have right now.
Could we add the others' requests to outside requests so we don't lose them?
I'm not sure if Kristin has the ability to edit it live. We do have it noted on our notes because this is, I believe, a PDF and a link that's on.
Oh, I see.
But we do have it noted and I just want to clarify the items on this list, including broadband. One for broadband, we didn't have the dollar amount for quite a while, but all of these or most of these items that are on this list have been discussed by council, but there's never been a decision to formally approve the allocation. So I think the North Country EMS station has not been discussed with council, to my knowledge, but the majority of these other items have been. So that's why it's listed on here.
Thank you. And let's begin now with the staff report. And Kathleen, would you turn it over as appropriate?
Yes, I'll turn this over to Mark, but just as an overview of what we're discussing today, if we go back to the first slide on here and Mark will go over this, is to provide an update to the council on what already has been committed and spent. And again, this is all per council's direction. And then talk about items that have been discussed or not committed or the new request. And so I believe that right now, our request and committed is exceeding the total amount that we have. So we are hoping to obtain some direction from council. We can certainly, you know, get the final direction today or if you need another week to, you know, review things in more detail, we can bring it back next week for that direction just to make sure that everybody is on the same page moving forward. So with that, Mark, do you want to go ahead and get started with the overview?
Sure. Just to clarify, everyone can hear me?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you. Counsel, today we're going to take the opportunity to report back to you based on where we're at. And I think this is very appropriate. It was approximately a year ago that we started down this path. I believe our first staff report allocating ARPA funds was almost exactly a year ago. So what I'm going to review first of all are the committed funds that the council has already approved. And to kind of give you a reminder, what we've done as requests have been received for ARPA funds, we have had those different departments create staff reports to come to you. So anything that you see that appears on this list, you have received a staff report for and have approved that staff report. I can go down the list for you. You can take a look at this. I have invited a few of the larger groups to just kind of present to you so that you can get an update on where they're at and so that you can, again, I want you to get the feel of what's happening. You can see the expenditures are starting to happen now. It's taken a while to get these programs up to speed. You know, for example, the third item down on the list is the Community Grant Program, which was just recently approved. We are now working on contracts with those individual awards so that we can get that funding out to the community. So what I'd like to do now is just have a couple of these larger requests kind of report back. I know I saw Vanessa on the line, so I think I will go to her first with Community Services so that she can let you know where they're at in their projects. So Vanessa, can you join us?
Good morning, counselors.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Vanessa.
Oh, yes. I'm just going to hand it over to Michael. I want to thank you for allowing us to kind of come and briefly talk about the 15.5 million that we got from you. Thank you for allowing us to put that into the homeless system to add increased capacity. We did get other COVID funding to help with that as well, but this is specifically for the funding that we received from the county council. So I am going to hand it over to Michael. I apologize. I need to leave early. I have a doctor's appointment, but Michael will be able to answer any of your questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Vanessa. Good morning, Counsel. Michael Torres, Program Manager, Clark County Community Services. Rebecca Messenger, are you going to put up the slides for the Community Services ARPA funding? And if I need to share them, I also have them on my screen. Just let me have. Okay, I will go ahead and hold that up. Give me one moment. Do, does the council see the slides? Can anyone hear me?
Yeah, I think, Michael.
And we can see the slides, Michael.
Okay, thank you so much. So I would ask to give you a status update on the ARPA funds for 15.5 million that the council approved. And just as a review, Clark County Council, as Mark Gasaway said, it was almost exactly one year ago. You allocated, you approved allocation of 15.5 million in ARPA funds on June 15th, 2021, to increase the capacity of our homeless crisis response system. And that broke down into 4.4 million for outreach services, $5 million for shelter, $800,000 for motel vouchers, $300,000 for data collection and coordination, $2.5 million for rapid rehousing and $2.5 million for permanent supportive housing. The intent behind this request was to help address the increases in homelessness and the stresses on the system, on the homeless system that was brought on by the pandemic. All funds were allocated to service contracts by the end of the calendar year. So not only have has the council allocated these funds, but all that 15.5 million is actually already in contracts with service providers and has started going down into the community. All contracts are in place by the end of 2021. All contracts add capacity, meaning they do not supplant any other funding. This is new dollars coming into the system to increase service capacity. All contracts require data collection and reporting from the service providers. They require increased coordination and connection of services with behavioral health systems and the providers. And the priority in the implementation of contracts and projects has been outreach, shelter, data collection, then rapid rehousing, and finally, permanent supportive housing. And the permanent supportive housing programs are just now really getting stood up and implemented in these contracts. So for outreach, the dollars have gone into Council for the Homeless Outreach and Assessment. It provides housing vulnerability assessments and essential services in the field. So Council for Homeless staff have some teams that go out in the field to do infield housing assessments to help people who are unsheltered in vehicles and encampments receive faster housing assessments and increase the speed with which they can access housing and shelter programs. And it does include also unhoused persons that are residing in systems of care, such as jails, hospitals, and other settings, because we have seen a lot of requests and need from both the hospitals and jails for having people that are in those systems of care be receiving housing assessments and get connected to the homeless system before they get released. The Share Homeless Outreach Team, these funds have helped increase the Share Outreach Team from 2.5 staff to 11. It has also increased outreach team hours to weekends and evening coverage. This program staff provides outreach to individuals in encampments, streets, parks, and other locations as needed. The Outreach Team provides housing assistance, connection to essential services, including mental health, substance abuse treatment, disability benefits, and other services to increase the overall health and safeties of people who are experiencing homelessness here in Clark County. Janus Youth Outreach, these funds, these ARPA funds are supporting a pilot for a youth by name list, which is basically people, you know, youth that are identified as homeless in Clark County. They are on a list that Janus Youth coordinates so that those individuals are sought out by the outreach teams and engagement continues with those individuals until they are off the street and into housing. It also streamlines homeless management information system data entry and management processes within Janus Youth Shelter and their outreach programs. And, you know, as mentioned, all these contracts are already in place. The services are being provided between July 1st, 2021, and June 30th, 2022. 227 unduplicated households in Clark County have received services, outreach services, that were funded by ARPA. And just answering a question that Counsel Medvedji made, what does unduplicated mean? That means that a household is being counted once in this service. So you cannot, you know, like, so if the outreach team, any outreach team in the system, goes out and starts providing services to a household and they enter them in HMIS, any future contacts, that household is not counted again as a separate engagement. So this is 227 different households that are being engaged or have been engaged by outreach teams in this period of time that were funded with ARPA. So I'm going to go to, unless there are any questions, I'm going to go to the next slide and start talking about shelters.
Madam Chair, I have a question.
Chair, you're muted.
I couldn't tell who that was who spoke, but please go ahead.
I guess my question is, since this is, ARPA is one-time funding and you've increased staffing, what happens when the funding runs out?
Thank you for the question. And on the most part, what's going to happen is that some of these services are going to scale down. The intent when we came to the council requesting this funding is to have a temporary, not in all cases, but in most of these cases, to have a temporary increase in capacity to the system to allow it to address the increases and stresses that we are encountering from the pandemic and coming out of the pandemic. So some of these, you know, a lot of these services are going to contract back to what they were before. Some of that is going to be mitigated and we can have separate presentations about this because it can get, it can get pretty complicated. But some of this will get mitigated from, there is some additional funding that is coming into the homeless system in the future from the state. In the Consolidated Homelessness Grant and the System slash System Demonstration Grant from the state, there is going to be an increase of a couple million dollars a year. We are also seeing increases in revenue with the document recording fees that are paying for homeless services. And there are some additional document recording fees that are specific to rental assistance prevention activities that are coming into the system. That will help. But there will still be somewhat of a contraction. Does that answer the question, Counsel Rylander?
Sure. I guess one follow-up. This is the business side of me thinking about this and that is, are there actually any metrics or other methods of gauging the value, the benefits of these increased services due to the availability of these ARPA funds?
Thank you for asking that. And you are asking one of Counsel Medvedji's and Chair Baurman's favorite questions. We are very focused on metrics, performance measures, and defining outcomes. Overall, for the homeless system, some of the things that we track are amount of time homeless, length of time that it takes to get into the service, amount of time that the household is in the service, the cost, the cost during that amount of time the household is being served by homeless services, and what is the percentage of successful exits from a program into not subsidized permanent housing, and what the recidivism rates are if someone, you know, like from someone moving into permanent housing to falling back into homelessness. And we do track all of those numbers and we put them in the contracts for our service providers to track. We use, that's what the Homeless Management Information System is what we use for. And if we go back to the previous slide, we prioritize that. So, you know, as the third bullet down or fourth bullet down, all contracts add capacity. The very next thing, you know, one of our top priorities is require data collection and reporting. And if you look at the last bullet, the priority of implementation, because of the needs that we're seeing right now are outreach, shelter, data collection, so that we can do it. The next echo meeting that we have next week, Counsel Medvedji asked some excellent questions about this presentation and about what are we getting, you know, really get down to, what are we getting out of these ARPA funds? Like, this is great that this number of households have been served for outreach and shelter and these other interventions in this amount of time. But how many beds of shelter have really been produced? What are, you know, how many more people are actually What are, you know, how many more people are actually being served? How does that compare to previous years? And I have some of those answers right right now, but I'm really going to be putting in a presentation and presenting it to the echo next week, where we'll get into more detail with that. And we will also be sharing that presentation through the county manager and through Lindsay here to make sure that all the counselors get that presentation.
Thank you.
So for shelter, the the five million dollars are going into Catholic Community Services Berthus Two. That adds thirty two year-round non-congregate shelter beds. So these are actual concrete in addition to beds that are, have been brought into the system because of ARPA. Berthus Two was not in the pipeline prior to discussion of ARPA funds. Berthus Place, which was the motel, a sixty-two-room non-congregate shelter that's near the Vancouver Mall, that was in the pipeline prior to ARPA funds. But we had an additional opportunity, a facility that used to be used for for behavioral health services, known as Elhan Place, became available to us. We immediately jumped on that, knowing the need for shelter capacity in this community is great. And now, and we now have functioning in our community a new thirty two, thirty two-bed year-round congregant shelter, non-congregant shelter, excuse me. Council for the Homeless is receiving funds for shelter coordination, and that is increasing available shelter bed nights for severe weather shelter and the winter hospitality out overflow. The goal of this contract is an additional one hundred twenty guests being served during severe weather and the winter hospitality months across five shelters. It also adds some motel voucher availability to provide temporary shelter for individuals, couples, and families during severe weather events and during the winter. Share Family Shelters and, actually, I'm going to just say Share Share Shelters in general, that it's happening at each of their shelter facilities, are adding housing, have added Housing Navigator and Case Case Manager Engagement Specialist Staff at Share Orchards, well, at all their facilities. And that the point behind this staffing, it doesn't increase beds, but it increases those shelters' ability to serve households that are, have more acute service needs. So they will be able to accept people that would not, they would not otherwise be able to accept, and it improve their stability faster and exit them from shelters faster, you know, to increase the throughput. So how many people are being served by shelter, by those shelters should increase, even though we have not increased the bed capacity? One of the questions, Counselor Medvedji, is for all these staffing increases, you know, how much, you know, how much are we talking about? And the Berthus Two and motel vouchers take about half of that five million dollars. Staffing across all the shelters accounts for the second half of of that funding, which really averages out to just under two hundred thousand dollars per shelter per year in staffing, staffing increases. So Share House is the same same kind of staffing that was added. YWCA Safe Choice is providing additional client services to persons fleeing domestic violence. They've added a housing specialist and a client advocate to increase shelter capacity. You know, same way that I just mentioned that we're doing with Share is increasing exits from the shelter and making sure, increasing that those exits be to housing, not to homelessness. So that is something that we are really looking at and working on. And and the YWCA Safe Choice also does provide some emergency motel vouchers for persons that are fleeing domestic violence, who would otherwise occupy a shelter bed. So between July first, 2021, and June 30th, 2022, four hundred thirty five unduplicated households in Clark County have received emergency services that were funded by ARPA already. Counselor Medvedji, very understandably, has given us feedback and asked, hey, this is great that this number is, you know, so many people are being served. How credible is this number? Especially when we consider that in the point in time count from twenty twenty two, what just came out was three hundred eighty nine persons were in emergency shelter in that point in time count. This seems high. And and just so you know, these numbers are being tracked and reported in HMIS. They are a very credible number. It would seem high if you just look at the point in time count number. But please remember that the point in time count is a single-day snapshot of people that are unsheltered and in shelter. So on February 24th, the day of the twenty two, twenty twenty two point in time count, there were three hundred eighty nine persons in shelter. For the whole of 2021, there were one thousand one hundred seventy eight persons in shelter. So it it makes sense, and it's very credible, that just over one-third of the total number of people that were served in about a year period have been touched by ARPA funds and assisted with these services. Any questions before I leave Shelter Services? So for Rapid Rehousing, and again, we are entering Rapid Rehousing and Permanent Supportive Housing. We've moved quickly, we've moved to implement these contracts and programs quickly, but our priority has been outreach and shelter. So we, all of these programs, Rapid Rehousing and Permanent Supportive Housing, are much earlier in getting stood up by those services than outreach and shelter. We will be seeing significant increases in expenditures across all these services, but especially Rapid Rehousing and Permanent Supportive Housing this year and next year. So at Rapid Rehousing, we have three programs. Share Rapid Rehousing adds staff to support an additional, an estimated, a projected additional thirty persons with the goal of rapidly moving them from homelessness into housing and provide some rental assistance for those additional houses. And it provides some flex, some flexible funding to the other Rapid Rehousing programs in the system. And that would be flexible funding that would be needed to keep households stably housed or help them access housing. If if there is a big barrier that that could not be covered by other costs, all of these, no funds are being supplanted. These are all new services, new dollars into the system to serve additional people that would otherwise be served. Lifeline Connections, it's Rapid Rehousing, not PSH, excuse me. It supports households with behavioral health conditions who are literally homeless, and it's increasing staff to serve a projected additional and duplicated for households. Janus Youth increases capacity to serve individuals and families with a youth head of households who are literally homeless. So to this point, since July first, 2021, to June 30th, 2022, there are twenty two unduplicated households in Clark County that have received Rapid Rehousing services that have been funded by ARPA. Any questions on Rapid Rehousing before I move to Permanent Supportive Housing? So Permanent Supportive Housing, Share Permanent Supportive Housing, all of these, really, actually, most of these, Share, Lifeline, C Mar, and Impact Northwest, they are adding staff to serve, to increase capacity and serve projections of additional households. In the case of Share, it's a projection of twenty, twenty additional households, it's supposed to say additional households in in their programs. Lifeline Connections, seven additional households, C Mar, Permanent Supportive Housing, of twenty additional housing, and Impact Northwest, four additional households. Vancouver Housing, PSH, they are providing, it's also for increasing staffing, but this is at new facilities, new PSH site-based facilities, the Pacific, the Meridian, and the Elwood. And they're going to be increasing progressive engagement, connect residents to services, and bridge gap for services for residents that are not enrolled in case management that is funded by foundational community supports. So the way that that, so foundational community supports or FCS is a program that is funded by Medicaid, where it can pay for case management, it cannot pay for housing. That household that is eligible for those services can accept it or turn it down once. And if they turn it down, they're no longer eligible for for those services. It's an opportunity that is gone. So we do want, and in a lot of cases, these are households that have behavioral health challenges, mental health challenges, that may not really understand initially what they are being, what they are turning down. And the idea with this is to engage them as much as possible in providing stability so that when they are offered the foundational community supports, they are in a place where they will say yes. And those funds can can come in and and pay for that case management. So it should, you know, the idea is that we will decrease recidivism out of those facilities by having, allowing the system to be more flexible on how foundational community supports comes in. So that's what we are funding with ARPA funds, with Permanent Supportive Housing. And to this point, during that same period, July first, 2021, to June 30, 2022, three unduplicated households in Clark County have received permanent supportive housing services that are funded by ARPA. And I will make sure these, those edits are made prior to the echo meeting. Any questions regarding permanent supportive housing?
Michael, does this conclude your report in that event?
Yes.
It does. Thank you so much. I I look forward to what comes to Echo next week as well. I wanted to ask Mark Gassaway for some assistance in helping us move to the discussion aspects of the ARPA funding and some of the programs that are not yet funded also, where you'd like to have some input.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, I have a lot of comments and questions on the presentation that Michael had.
I suspect that many of us do. I'm just concerned that we also have time for this actual agenda item, which is to look at the the ARPA funding. Mark, could you guide us on that so that we can have a sense of how much discussion we can have now versus on the agenda per se? I don't see Mark's picture there. Are you with us? Kathleen, would you be willing to help out on that? Do you see where Mark is or is not present?
I I see that he's on there, but for some reason, he's not coming through. So, Mark, if you want to try to rejoin, we'll watch for you. Is that Mark? So, Mark, you're cutting out, so you may want to try to call in or rejoin again. So if it's accessible to the council, I can continue the conversation a little bit more. So as Mark started out on this first slide here, these are all of the grant funds, funding that's been approved by council and from ARPA, that, like you said, you've already approved all of these. And it has the committed amount, what has currently been spent, and the remaining. And I can certainly go through these and provide a high overview of these, or I can just ask council if you have any specific questions or based on what you've already approved and just, if there's any specific questions, we can try to answer those before we move on to the next area.
Okay, can I ask a question?
Of course.
And I do have a specific question as well, after Dip goes.
So looking at this page, this chart, ARPA Grant Funding Balance Projection Getting Q2 2022. Make sure we're on the same page. Really. So it looks like on total, it appears that there is a commitment of fifty point one eight million. Eight point two two million have been spent, leaving forty one point nine seven that is already committed. It's in process. So is it correct to assume that these items are sort of inviolate? They they exist, they've been approved.
Yes.
They're in process. And so then I'm keenly interested in how much money is left after all of this?
Yeah, so this money has been committed. So departments are working with the budgeted amount that has been approved by council in providing the services or purchase or whatever was approved. So, yes, so this money has been spoken for and will not be available unless something were to come in under budget. And I do have members of my finance team on here as well that can chime in. Is, do you have other questions on these items?
Well, there's the uncommitted over in the kind of blue dark line, forty seven point six two. Is that the remainder of the ARPA funds?
Yes, that is, that is correct.
That is usable, allocatable?
Yes, and Emily, can you confirm with me that that also includes the small grant or the small project that was already accounted for as well on the second slide?
Yes, the small projects are included in the very top portion of the, if you can scroll back up. I'm sorry, let me, I just want to see the main list, it changed a couple times. Yes, I believe that forty seven, just a little bit more Rebecca down, just like one, one thing. The forty seven point six two is is what is left, and that includes everything that's been committed, I believe, including the small projects. That's a million dollars. I can confirm that. Let me look real quick. But it, the next slide goes into what that small project fund has been used for.
The internal small works is the small project fund on line two.
I couldn't, we couldn't hear Laura, what you just stated.
I'm sorry, the second line on the first slide is the small projects fund. It's in the first slide.
Right, so I, the question I just wanted to confirm is the forty seven point six two million that is shown as uncommitted, that includes everything that's already been committed on the first page as well as the amount committed in the small projects?
Correct.
Okay, so that is what is currently available. And then the last page includes new new requests, both internal and external.
Correct.
Not including those that were added today?
That would include the battleground aquatics center, small business grants, and the nonprofit grant as well. So that's an additional three million that's not on here, but we have it noted. And I believe Mark is back on as well. But before we go to there, is there any other questions on the first slide that has, I think Counselor Medvedji, you said there may be some questions you have on that first slide. We want to, I, or answer for you before we move forward.
Information technology, I recall approving about four million dollars. I I don't remember ten millions unless unless there were a separate approvals. And because I, the Superior Court, the PA's office, all of that was separate funding. So that the ten million for information technology caught me by surprise as a huge chunk when my recollection was, it was all only in the ballpark of about four million that we we had approved. Are we accumulating, are we, are there more than one approval that was embedded in that information technology? You know, hardware, software, protection from intrusion? Did that become a cumulative amount of ten million?
Counselor Medjivi, can you hear me? I'm sorry, I don't, I'm, my, something happened to my connection. Can you hear me? Good. I believe that was actually a single request that was approved, and Laura can I believe that was actually a single request that was approved and Laura can confirm that. They have very early on, they made the request. And so I don't know that there's been supplemental requests since the initial request. But I believe that was one request. And I did invite Mike Sprinkle to be on as well. And I don't know if he was able to make it. I know he had a conflicting meeting. So, but, but that was a single request, Counselor.
Okay, thank you.
This is Mike Sprinkle, the Director of IT I am on. I can
You, Michael.
Yeah, there, that is actually two requests. One was for network infrastructure and the second was for cybersecurity program. The network infrastructure makes up about 8.7 of that total. And part of the reason why the spend is so low to date is although if you go into, there's a big conference room on our floor is full of boxes of equipment. But the process the vendor goes through is they will not invoice us until we get all of the equipment. And of course, due to supply chain issues, we've been slow to get it all, so they haven't invoiced us, even though we're sitting with a room full of equipment.
Mark, you're on mute.
You know, I try and not do that. Thank you, Mike. Counselor, to answer your question, I want to move forward this, through this quickly. I did want to give a report, though I know council has made a lot of has heard a lot of requests and have approved a lot of requests. And I want you to feel comfortable that this list, it is comprehensive. There are a lot of things on here. We don't add anything to this list without your approval. But as long as you feel comfortable with where we're at on this list, then I'll move forward quickly to counsel or Chair Bowerman's request. So any questions on this? You can see that spending is happening and I anticipate that over the next year or year and a half, you're going to see a lot of spending in these areas. It does take a while to ramp up the programs that these that these grants have, or these authorizations provide, so.
Yeah, so Mark, to your question, it does answer my question. It just kind of highlights when we're looking at policy decisions to partial out this money, you know, where to allocate it, what are the priorities? You know, cumulative projects become it somewhat obfuscates our priorities. So I'm, not that we're wrong on that 10 million for IT, but had I seen the 10 million in one lump sum, I might have said, well, that's just too much to invest in IT right now because we have so many other needs. So that, that's my only comment on that. It does answer the question. I just want to confirm because you were kind of off the net when Kathleen was explaining what we had left to really talk about.
Yeah.
Was the 47 million. Is that correct?
If you scroll down to the bottom, just a little bit more, thank you. And I apologize, it overlapped in the little blue area there. The 47.6 million is the uncommitted amount. That amount has not been committed for any program at this point. If you could scroll down to the next slide real, just quickly. And this is the $1 million small project. There are several projects in here that you've approved recently. I want you to make, I want to make sure that you understand that this is a subset of that million dollar commitment that was made at the end of last year. And so we haven't left out any projects from the, the first slide that you saw, but this is a subset of those small projects, the million dollar. So, and there's still 283,000, almost 284,000 uncommitted in this, in this category. So now going down to the next list, please. So here is, I know you've been all waiting for this. This is the current request, and some of these are coming to you. Some of these you've heard. Some of these are coming in the 2023 budget process, but I wanted you to kind of have a comprehensive list of some of the things that are still out there. To this, you've added two additional projects today. We can't modify the slide on the, on the run, unfortunately. But we'll make sure that it's updated. One thing I would mention, though, on the the YMCA pool, we need to do further research in that because there's specific guidance in the, in the Department of Treasury's final rule regarding community centers. And before funds are allocated to that, we have to make sure they're eligible. And the request will be made and we'll note it, we'll do the research to make sure that it's eligible for ARPA funding and bring that information back to council.
Madam Chair, if I could just, on this pooled conversation, I don't, I'm not sure we've, we've, as a council, talked about it and actually decided to put it on the list. I think you had two counselors comment on it, but I don't think we've talked about it. So maybe before you put it on the list and do any more work, we have a conversation about it?
Sure, absolutely. And that's kind of where we're at in this presentation today. I wanted to show you what has been committed and do an accounting of what's already been committed and try and give you information. I know that there is a lot in community development, but that's a very, you know, high level project. I wanted you to, to get some feedback on what is happening. I think some of the other projects on that first list you're pretty familiar with now. They're a little bit more recent. Again, these are new requests that some, like I said, some have been presented to you before. And some are maybe new. And the, there are some individuals, if you have questions about any of these projects that are on the call today. Michelle is here to talk about the space planning. I know we've had a lot of discussion about space planning. It's a very big ask. But it may be also a very, one of the most needed things that we need to have done in the county. The Treasurer's Office is on to talk about their proposals. I know that Chief Ford is on to talk about the EMS station, and then Lindsay here is here to talk about broadband. So I, I'm going to turn it back now to council so that you can go through, as you would like, discuss these programs. None of them have come to you in a formal staff report approval. That would be the next step as after today's discussion. So I will turn it back to Chair Bowerman to lead this discussion with council so that you can give staff direction on where you would like us to go with these proposals.
I think my perception and council, correct me or change this if you wish, would be to have an overview of the grant fund requests that are new that we don't know about yet. And so that we have a general idea of what they are so that we can figure out where we want to go from here. Does that sound okay?
So, Madam Chair, I did want to comment on Counselor Olson's point and also what Mark Gassaway said very briefly because I think it's an overarching aspect of this entire conversation. One, I really think I agree with Counselor Olson. We need, on the pool issue, we need to, you know, regardless of the legal issue, we need to know if there's support. You know, the City Council of Battlegrounds kind of been all over the map on it. And I don't know where they sit right now. The 40 million in space planning, I that's going to be the low hanging fruit as, as far as an adjustment. And we're right in the process of a countywide vote on our public safety sales tax, which right now looks pretty good. So if that passes, we may not need that 40 million for space planning. And that would give us the ability to lift and shift that money into other needs. So just an overarching comment.
Yes, if I can, yes, it is. My apologies, Chair. I do want, I do want, and I know Michelle is on here for this, this is tied to the jail as well. So we do not have funding to remodel the jail outside of this. And if the proposition passes, that's not going to be enough money to address our jail and the remodel that is needed as well as the family law annex and CJC and stuff. So this is, I mean, there are very specific urgent needs that we need to address. That does come with a high dollar sign that we do not have the funding to do. So I just want to make sure that that's understood.
Counterpoint, but that's the conversation we need to have because this tax money will go a long way towards some of those needs. So we can consider what our priorities are and what, where the ARPA money, I mean, that's the whole basis for this conversation. It's not necessarily going to be led by the executive.
Well, I'd like to see us understand what each of these requests is for so that we can engage then in conversation on priorities and whatnot. Let's just start at the top, the Children's Justice Center with advocacy service positions. What is that, 198?
Madam Chair, I'm sorry to interrupt. May I ask a question or just? So I guess I have a question about our process going forward. I don't know that we would have, are we planning to go through each of these today and in detail to try to find some path forward or my thought would be if we talk about space planning and trying to understand exactly what's going to be hap, what's going to be requested or what that looks like? Or if there's a home buyer down payment assistance program? Are we, are we planning on doing all of that today to get into the detail? Or would it be something to consider where we actually have a work session where we have, we're planning on in-depth communications about these? I guess that's my question for you maybe as we go forward. Because it seems to me like there's some requests here that are extraordinarily detailed and need some time. And I don't know that we've allotted that type today. So that's just my question.
Well, we can, we could put it off to a work session if, if that's what the council wishes. But otherwise, we can spend a bit of time on it today and maybe make some preliminary decisions on their our willingness and interest in going forward to learn more on certain ones of them. For example, the home buyer down payment assistance program. With the treasurer, we've spent three in-depth meetings on that for several hours. And so if you wanted to get all of the depth on that, yes, indeed, that would take a while. But within just a short period from the treasurer, you could get enough of an overview to know, is that something that you'd like to see remaining on the list for future discussion? So council, tell me, what is your wish? Personally, I'd like to go down through the list and kind of see what these things are. For example, Zoom licenses, I, I don't know what that's, you know, I'd just like to know what these things are for. Does that sound okay? Let's do it. So the Children's Justice Center advocacy service positions, what is that, $200,000?
So Chair, currently, if you, if you were to go back to the first list, there's already been a position approved in the Children's Justice Center for advocacy services. They have found that because of the pandemic, there's been an increase in need for this. So they have actually they have an FTE position. And what this would do, it would be continue to fund that position. And actually, I believe, add another position. So it would be continuing to fund an existing project position and add another one for the following year.
Any other questions for Mark on that? Just a brief overview on what it is? Thank you, because that helps me understand what we're talking about. How about with the county clerk overtime and/or temp?
Again, this is a continuation. They have currently requested and received ARPA funding because of their hiring situation. They are very understaffed. And this is a small grant, if you go to the small grant page, sorry. But they, this was, would be, there you go. See the, if you, if you see the overtime clerk's office?
So the, so Mark, this one was already approved. So the new request on the last slide that they're asking for, I think, is it in addition to this? Isn't that correct?
Yes, that would be for the following year. That would be for a continuation into 2023.
And the question I have on that, was that tied to, you know, originally we helped CJC when they lost a grant? And because they had other funding streams for some of these positions that they lost. And originally, when we teed it up, and this was with a prior council membership, it was going to be for the interim until they returned to that funding stream. So, and so I'm concerned about sustainability into the future and whether or not these are the same advocacy positions that used to be provided by other funding streams.
And again, what I believe happened is that this is a new position that was created specifically to deal with the increase in caseload primarily coming out of the pandemic. So that was my understanding. And again, this is a a pro, or a program that's in place now. And a lot of these are requests for 2023. So for example, this would continue into 2023. And as Kathleen said, the county clerk, you, you've already approved a ARPA grant for this year, and this would continue it into 2023.
That gives us a good overview. Kathleen, with regard to space planning and the jail and so on, is there anything you wish to add to what was already said?
I don't have anything. I would ask Michelle Schuster, I know she's got to jump off here shortly. So Michelle, is there anything else briefly that you would like to have council be aware of?
Yeah, so this project for the $40 million, what, where is someone we can get for that money is relocating and building up a new family law annex, a new Children's Justice Center, relocating the sheriff's admin over to the Dolly Building, consolidating and better utilizing our IT, human resources, community planning, law library, public health, clerk joint lobby and communication spaces. And then building out some space for district and Superior Court, for arraignment courts and district court for probation on the first floor of the jail, once we move out the administration. And then some stuff with Public Works, which we're hoping to get some of that reimbursed, so it's not actually used in the ARPA funding. And then probably we can also fit in the architectural engineering for the jail juvenile and work center bed and space planning for them. But the actual full remodeling of the jail is going to be well over what we can afford in this $40 million. And so we already have shown on some presentations to the council, these broken out space plan and then the jail bed. I'm estimating that $100 million possibly for the full blown jail renovation to renovate the rest of the floors in there, bring it up to ADA compliance, build out more space for the beds. So this does not actually include a lot of the jail stuff that I think Counselor Mevige is discussing.
Okay, thank you. How about the COVID cleaning? What does that entail?
Yeah, so that would be a third year of the COVID cleaning. We have been approved two prior years for 2021 and 2022. The council approved us extra money for additional cleaning and oral art facilities when we had a COVID outbreak, cleaning common areas, places that are high touch, the jury assembly rooms, the, you know, anywhere we have a lot of public or a lot of close contact stuff. And so this, because we are still seeing significant cases of COVID, we're asking to carry and do one more year in 2023 to keep up that COVID cleaning.
Very good. Thank you. And how about the Superior Court Zoom licenses and phones?
Again, we, because of the way that they're doing business now, they are doing a lot of their meetings over Zoom. And so again, this is a continuation of what they're currently doing, so.
I wa, I have watched some of the Superior Court proceedings online and have seen them interviewing some of the inmates actually in their cells with via Zoom. So it's a very interesting and different process than what we're used to from years ago. The treasurer, Alicia Topper, are you with us this morning already? Yes, there you are. Would you care to speak on the next two?
Yes, thank you so much, Chair. So the delinquent property tax support-
So the delinquent property tax support, the $600,000 request is an extension of the $300,000 that you approved with the small works grant this year. So for next year, we are hoping to have these funds available to homeowners that had a financial hardship due to the pandemic and that are facing home foreclosure through the delinquent tax process. This would be direct support to pay those delinquent property taxes, therefore releasing the individuals from the auction of their property. The second item from the treasurer's office is a new program. It would be a homeowner's down payment assistance program that is a qualifying expense under ARPA's final rule. This program is very different than the other programs that you've approved under ARPA funding in that it doesn't come back to the county as an internal project. This would be a direct support to future homeowners that are moderate to low-income working families. That would provide a second lien on their home as a down payment assistance grant. So essentially, we would work with the Washington State Housing Finance Commission, who already runs these programs in five other, you know, five other municipalities. A homeowner would identify a home that is no more than the market rate for our Clark County area. They would work through a lender. And we have more than 199 qualified lenders that work with the commission currently in Clark County. They would go through traditional financing. And then they, if they qualified for down payment assistance, they then would get that funding through the commission funded by the county. And it would be over a 30-year term. And it would be paid back at 2% simple interest at the time of a refinance or the time that they finish paying off their mortgage. That money then would get recycled back into this fund, be replenished. So another family who would qualify could then receive down payment assistance. We would work in partnership with the Vancouver Housing Authority. My office would consult with community services as well as the auditor's office. And I provided quite a bit of detail in a staff report. And I'm happy to answer any detailed questions that you might have today. But this is a way to really give back to the community and help folks that can afford a mortgage payment, but just don't have that nest egg for the down payment.
Approximately how much would be considered the maximum for down payment assistance to an individual family?
So the maximum amount that was proposed is $60,000. And more than likely, that amount would not be needed for the majority of applicants. The Washington State Housing Finance Commission would also put forward $15,000 in down payment assistance. So that money could be leveraged as well, but 60K would be the max.
Follow-up question to that. Thanks, Alicia, for that, oh, bro, you know, overview. Where would our lien be as far as a priority should the mortgage fail?
In traditional financing deals, it would be a second position lien.
And there is a lot more that we can learn about both of those programs. And we'll figure out how that is going to follow. So thank you so much. Let's look to the North County EMS, the 2.5 million there. Kathleen, are you speaking on that or who is?
I think Chief Ward is on.
Oh, good.
I am here. Hello. Good morning. Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Yes. So thank you, councilors, for, for having us in today. So we are, have been attempting for two years to build a replacement station for our station in Fargo Lake. And due to the rapid growth of the economy, it's no longer affordable for us. A year ago, when ARPA was first brought to the county, I made it a request at that time for a little under $1 million. And now I have to ask for $2.5 million because of the cost of construction. We went out to bid, bids came back in May at an average cost of $5.2 million for this facility, which the September prior cost estimator had put at $3.5 million. So it's now at a point where we will never be able to accumulate the funds required to build this facility. For those aren't familiar with North Country EMS, we are the provider of EMS from northern rural Clark County. We provide our operations out of a regular EMS levy and an excess EMS levy that our voters approve on themselves every three years. So they're already vote this tax on themselves pretty high. And we don't have the extra funds outside of our operations to pay for this facility. So this is a partnership. We have a little over $3 million available of our own funds and are asking for the $2.5 million so that we can start this project. Every month that we wait to start it, the GC is estimating the price is going up at least 1.5%. So the longer we wait, the worse we are. So that's where we're, we're asking for this. Stations such as this are very common for ARPA fund uses across the country. Fire stations, EMS stations are being built with these funds. This is a very common ask and request. Definitely meets, you know, we're, we're a critical resource. If another pandemic happens, of course, we never went home. We were here 24/7. So we're just asking to keep that ability to serve our citizens here. So that's what we're asking for. I know that's kind of short, but I know there's a lot of requests and that's what we're asking for. So any questions?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Counselor.
So I, I was kind of shocked that the request did more than double in just a couple months' time. And so I heard you say that explanation was construction cost to go from a million-dollar ask to a point, point, $2.5 million ask. So that, that really came as quite a surprise. The other part of this is, and Mark, you would teed this off when this request was first made under that $2 million allocation for nonprofits and small businesses, that there were other possibilities for these capital costs through state program and perhaps through federal money as well. What are we pursuing that? Whatever happened to those other avenues to get this delta filled with other than ARPA money?
Yeah, Chief Ward, he's done some research. Chief, maybe you can speak to that. I also have talked with the Department of Commerce as well, and, and they're pursuing possibilities. So go ahead, Chief.
Yep. So there's, so Counselor Mevige, there's a, there's a couple. We have, we have looked into the state commerce. The first issue that I'm running into is that Clark County isn't poor enough. Does that make sense? So there's a, there's a requirement right to get those funds is you have to be at a certain poverty level for those of you serve. And I'm not finding that we're really meeting those metrics. So I don't know if that's good or bad, however you want to look at it. The other issue is that unfortunately, and I, I wish I knew about the state earlier. I don't know if we would have qualified for it, but the timeliness of it, I, it's like, it's the, the target's constantly moving. Like you, you're, you're astonished as much as I was that we went from $1 million to $2.5 million. If I wait for the state for another year, I don't even know where the ask is going to be then. So we, we are trying and Mark has some conversations with folks there as well. But my first pass, and I was working with GIS to try to help me, is that we're just not poor enough. Basically, is how I would put it.
Great. Thank you. A lot more to learn about that too, and it's a great project, obviously. Let's turn to broadband. We know a lot about broadband. Lindsay, why 4.8 million in this request?
So I will update the number. We have a revised number from Comcast. They anticipate that they would need the county to cover 4.646 million. So slightly less than previously estimated. This is a rural broadband expansion just northeast of Battleground Lake that would serve an additional 503 passings, which are the new available connections for residences and businesses within the area. And they would provide the entire last mile build out for the project to provide the qualifying high-speed broadband internet access for this area. I will note that a number of other counties have utilized their ARPA dollars for this process. Spokane County recently awarded $2.5 million to Comcast for a rural broadband expansion there as well. I know you've heard a lot about the state broadband office and federal dollars that are coming in. We anticipate that almost all, if not all, of the federal dollars will be routed through the state broadband office and be available for grants. But we don't, as of yet, have the final rules from the state broadband office as to what their requirements will be. One of them that has excluded us in the past has been the open access network requirement that I've spoken to you about. So it's definitely something that Comcast is eager to partner with the county on subsequent grant applications, should we be a qualifying entity in the future. So they're eager to do that. But in the meantime, this would be a project that would be shovel-ready and could get started, and they could provide the rural broadband expansion. So I'm happy to answer any questions about this, but I know I've spoken to you about the particulars of it already.
Thank you, Lindsay. I think that's great for giving us an understanding of why the 4.6 million is, is requested now. 4.6, what is it?
4.646. So the county would be covering 70% and Comcast would be covering 30% plus any overages.
Okay, very good. So we've, I think, already got a tiny bit of an overview on the remaining three newly requested projects. So there are a total of 12 grant fund new requests. Council, how would you like to proceed on determining recommendation for Mark Gasway?
I think we're going to have to schedule some time and either meeting by Zoom or in person or hybrid, because these are tough priorities to look at. And there's going to be other discussion points. I, I mean, right away, I would add to the broadband that Lindsay mentioned, you know, that 31 miles of basically a new backbone will be scalable, meaning if the industrial area along the railroad is broadened, they would be able to provide more service. Once this neighborhood is provided service, they could then reach out to other neighborhoods as well. And additionally, this grant, if we give it, will attract other grants, both federal and state, because it'll show our commitment to improving broadband. So I, you know, and when, when Alicia put up those other requests that I wasn't familiar with, you know, right away, I was thinking, okay, well, delinquent tax, I'm in favor of that. New mortgages, I'm not so sure I want to get into that. But after she just gave a few minutes' explanation, I thought, wow, but that's going to have a long reach. That's going to play out forever and help a lot of people and impact homeless situation, among other things, and provide equity and access to low-cost homes. So I kind of, she won my heart and mind in just a couple minutes. But, you know, I think we need to sit down and go through these tough priorities and.
Okay, so how about Kathleen on August 10th? Do we have a work session scheduled?
I'm looking. Give me a sec.
I believe that's Wednesday. And is that too late, Mark?
You know, Council, Council, Chair, sorry. I don't know that it's ever too late. I mean.
Okay, that's good.
Council, this is, this is your, your money. You, you, you want, I know you want to make the best use of it as you can. So the more information you have, the better. So.
We're also eager to get it out there in the community. So it's a mix, isn't it? So Kathleen.
There is no work session, but next Wednesday, we do have Board of Health prior to council time.
Council, what is your wish? Would the 10th work for you?
Sure. And Chair, how would you like to structure that? Would you want each of these requesters to come to present? We do have staff reports for some of these already written that could be provided ahead of time. I'm, I'm not sure exactly how you'd like to structure that. We could talk about this for hours as we've already done, right?
Yeah, we certainly could. So we first need an updated spreadsheet. Okay, not on PDF.
Sure, sure.
Secondly, I think we need a commitment that these numbers are the final request that is being asked. Thirdly, the staff reports when they exist. And then I think we could just go down through them and see if there are certain items that council truly wishes to fund at the full amount. And boom, they're off the list. Get that done. And then we turn to reports as requested by council from others who are representing those programs. Does that sound good?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I, I agree. Thank you. For me, in terms of what's on this particular list, you know, I, I would like to get a brief overview of, of the details. But for me, the one that stands out is this space planning and $40 million ask. And I know we just got a bit of an overview from Michelle, but I don't think that is enough if we're going to consider a number of this magnitude that something in more detail in terms of where do we get the 40 million? I mean, I read the staff report and it's, it's fine, but it's very surface. So just for me, this is a very large project and a lot of money. So I would, this could be a work session all by itself, just that one. So just my thoughts there. The others, I think we can get through pretty efficiently. But just, again, just my thoughts on those.
And I agree, agree wholeheartedly with Counselor Olson. And I would add that in these discussions, we really should have some mention of what alternative funding may be in the pipeline and what alternatives there may be under different programs in addition to the ARPA Monday.
So Counselor Mevige, just my thought on that real quickly. I think that's incumbent upon those that are making the request to provide that information. I know that the county manager doesn't have a lot of staff to pursue those things and council doesn't have its own staff. So I would recommend that anyone presenting a request, provide that information and do that research. That way, I think it will split up that work so that it can be done in the next, what, 10 days? Or it's a week, right? Today's the Thursday. Yeah.
Okay, so Kathleen, may we go ahead with that schedule for the 10th?
Yes, we'll put it on the calendar. Thank you.
Okay, Council, is there anything else to resolve on this now? And you know, when you look at the total requested and the amount of monies that we currently have uncommitted, there isn't a whole lot of difference. That's the positive in all of this. So there's some need for decision-making clearly, but maybe not too monumental. So I'm very happy that we're not having to look for millions and millions to cut from the requests, because that is not only very tough, but has serious program consequences. Okay, let's move on from this agenda item. Thank you. Everybody connected with it. Bye-bye. Let's move to item 3.3, Climate Action Gorge Commission Request.
Yes, I'll, I'll start this and then hand it over to Oliver. So the Gorge Commission is requesting some time with council to talk about a climate action plan that they're looking into. So Oliver, if you could provide just a quick summary of what they're looking for and why, so the council can consider if you want to invite them to a future council time.
Thank you, Kathleen and Chair and Counselors, Oliver Ojek. I hope you can hear me very well. I'm having a problem with my video, so you might start giving echo. If I may, I think Kathleen is correct that what the Gorge Commission and their staff is looking for is an opportunity to provide a brief overview of the action, climate action plan, and answer any questions that our council may have. As councilors are aware, there is a, let's say, a small portion of Clark County that is within the gorge. And over the last year, the Gorge Commission, with support from USD Forest Service, has worked with various agencies, organizations and staff of the four Columbia River Treaty tribes to develop the climate action plan. Counselors, the action plan is really non-regulatory, but it provides a guide to climate adaptation and mitigation, particularly in the Columbia River Gorge National Scenic Area. And the Gorge Commission has, you know, their role, they have a significant role as a regional land use authority. So what they're really looking for is, we all know that we are beginning to experience extreme weather events resulting in landslide and increased wide fire risk, to name a few. And they believe that there is a need to focus on climate resilience, if you will, and adaptive approach to looking at how to protect natural resource areas. And this action plan is, is really focusing on how to deal with carbon storage inhabited and working lands and issues relating to regional transportation facilities and water refuge streams and how to deal with wetlands and what conditions may be very relevant to Clark County as we begin to look at climate change issues. So they, they will be very happy to discuss and provide an overview of the climate action plan with our counsel. And that's really what they are seeking for. If I may, by extension, and Lindsay can chime in here, the legislature tried, this is Washington State Legislature, they tried last year to make climate change a mandatory part of the Growth Management Act. What I can say is that they will make another attempt in the next legislative session. And if they are successful, Clark County and other counties planning under the GMA may be subject to really planning for a climate change as a component to the Growth Management Act. So I think there will be a great opportunity if the counsel can have an audience with the Gorge Commission to really dive in and provide you their concerns about climate change and how would they see that be applicable to the gorge area. By extension, other parts of the five counties that are within the gorge. So if you have questions, let me know. But I think the gorge staff will be more than happy to provide you an overview of the action plan and then answer questions that you may have. That's all I have, Counselors, is a, is a ask. And if you.
I have, I have a question.
Go ahead, Counsel Rylander.
So Oliver, how much, how much of Clark County, or do you have any idea how much of Clark County on a percentage basis was within the Gorge Commission's purview to share their views on climate change? Is it, is it like 1%, 2%, 5%? Is it a fraction of a percent? I'm just curious, any idea?
Counsel, I used to have that memorized, but I don't want to give you wrong information. We have about close to 700 acres or more of Clark County as part of the gorge. So I don't know whether that it falls within 3%, 4%, 5%. But I know it's more than 700 acres of Clark County that is within the gorge. I can provide you that information.
I, I was just curious. My, my perception is that it's very tiny, very tiny.
Yes, in comparison to other five counties, yes. But I'm more than willing to provide you that information. When we did the gorge update, we provided that information to our counsel relative to other counties that are within the gorge. It's very small, but we are in the gorge.
And given that, are you willing, Counsel, to have a presentation by the Gorge Commission on this?
Chair, I would not be interested in a presentation.
Well, thank you. And is that in part because of the size?
That and a whole topic of climate change, just on a personal intellectual basis.
How about others on the council?
I am supportive of having them present.
I'm sure that was Counselor Lentz, but I could not make it, make out what she said.
It was Counselor Lentz, and I would like them to present.
Okay, anyone else wish to speak on this?
I don't have an objection to their presenting to us.
Counselor Medjee, do you have a thought?
I like the way that was just phrased, no objection. I mean, I'm, I'm interested in what they're doing. That's despite the fact that we're such a small portion of their overall jurisdiction. I mean, it, it would be nice to hear from them. I'm just wondering if, what the time commitment is and if there are any alternatives to getting the information from them in a kind of an executive overview, considering the fact that we do have such a small footprint within the gorge.
Oliver, would you address that?
Certainly, I can reach out to the staff of the commission and ask for no more than 30 minutes. If they can provide us an overview to our counsel. I know they're reaching out to other counties within the gorge. So I could ask and see whether 30 minutes is enough for them to provide you an overview.
I'm not sure where 30 minutes came from. I was thinking of 10, but.
It just came out of me, sorry, Madam Chair, it just came out of me that 30 minutes, you know, presentation and answers may be, may be reasonable. But if you want less, I can, I can reach out and ask them for less.
Or if there is another, you said, Counselor Medjee, an executive type format in which to get the information alternatively? Yeah, if you would ask them that as well. And then if you would let us know, Oliver, we'd appreciate that.
Okay, I will be coordinating with the county manager quickly. So I will let the county manager know. Kathleen, do you have anything to add?
I think the only thing, just for clarification for me. So Oliver is going to reach out to them and ask them to provide an executive summary for counsel and see if they can present within 10 minutes. Well, we can bring this back to council time at that point and see if counsel wants to bring them in for a conversation. Is that what I'm hearing? Rather than just scheduling the 10 minutes. Okay, we'll, we will do that, thank you.
Let's move now to counselor reports. And actually, I would like to begin on this one. It appears that Proposition 11 is going to win by a margin of about 60 to 40. And given that, we as a council will want to begin our discussions on how those monies should be expended with the numbers that have been suggested by Mark Gasaway that will be coming to the county with the 60% that comes our way as opposed to the cities. We had developed or were starting to develop an empty spreadsheet that simply showed on the left-hand column those possible uses of the funds as indicated in the voter's pamphlet and the approval that counsel had given for putting this on the ballot in the first place. I would suggest that we put that empty spreadsheet with the listing of the items in the left-hand column for potential uses on our agenda to give us a mechanism for starting to talk about the detail of how those funds will be used. Starting, no doubt, with body and dash cams for a couple of reasons. One is that because of this having been on the ballot in November of 2021, we do have fairly definitive data on that, that we could start to fill in if we so choose. And then, and I presume that we would, because that has been one of the main talking points of Proposition 11 as it went through the processes. And then to start looking with Kathleen and, and your staff on the use of funds for sheriff's office, staffing in the jail, expansion of the jail, whatever lies ahead there. Does that sound like something that we could put on the agenda fairly rapidly so that we can start to have in our own minds how this is going to develop and as well to discuss it with the public?
Madam Chair, if I could.
Yes, Counsel Medjee?
So I think that's a great idea. And I'd like to expand a little bit on it, on something I was going to bring up today. In my conversations with others, including the manager, you know, we can't micromanage another department's budget, how they use it, whether efficiently or not, what's in their budget that may be available, where they're asking for additional budget resourcing, but we can see internally that they already have it within their budget. I think these issues are relevant when we start talking about law enforcement in particular. And then what can we do when we make policy decisions? Hey, we want to emphasize, and I'm just going to throw it out there notionally, hey, we want to, we want to have a task force on automobile theft all the time. Or we want to have a traffic division calming down and enforcing our traffic laws. And we're going to add some budget capacity for that. How can we tie that in our budget to ensure that that money is actually kind of earmarked and, and follows in that, that kind of budgetary direction that we give to another elected offices department? These are some complicated questions, but I think we need to know those tools as we have this conversation. The other part of this that I want, you know, we have, and Lindsay does great work. And we have a vacant position for economic development. And it, it had been filled for like three days when the, the person came and then the previous manager kind of said goodbye to that, that person that we had brought from the East Coast. That position's been vacant the entire time I've been on the council. We could use more policy advice when it comes to budgets and economic development. I would like to have that discussion with the other counselors. I think we should get that position filled. And I want to ensure that it, the scope of that position has the skill sets to address some of the budget issues and that may relate to economic development within the county. I, and I, I understand from Kathleen, we may have some of that capacity in different departments in the county right now. But I, I don't feel like we get enough detail that reflects our thought processes as counselors. We don't have any staff. Mark mentioned it again a few minutes ago. You know, we have to rely on the executive branch and other elected offices to give us input. And here's one vacancy that I think we could tailor to give us some policy direction on all of these issues.
A great topic area for future discussion. Let's be sure we get that scheduled. Don't think that that relates directly to Proposition 11. So let's, yeah, let's be sure that we don't miss it though for the future. So let's think back again. Does that approach for Proposition 11 sound satisfactory? And if it does, okay, great, thank you. I'm seeing a couple of additional thumbs there in addition to my own, so.
And I, I don't want to jinx the outcome of the election. We still have a few more days of ballot counting.
That's true. Coming 60-40 would be kind of tough though, right? That, you're absolutely right. Well, assuming that it does pass, what would be a logical time, Kathleen, to start getting this on the agenda?
I would, we can certainly bring up the spreadsheet before next week as you guys are looking at your ARPA conversation. But because of next week's agenda with Board of Health and the ARPA conversation, I would recommend it be the following Wednesday to make sure that we have enough time. But we can have it available next week if you want to review what was presented before.
That would be the 17th?
Correct.
Okay. Okay.
I'm sure, and I, and Chair, and I could say, I mean, if you want to have the conversation next week, we can certainly do what we can to accommodate that. I'm just worried about the time commitment, considering the Board of Health and the others. So if you would prefer to have it next week, we, staff can work on that.
I think if we have the blank spreadsheet by next week, it gets the thoughts going of counselors to be ready for the discussion on the 17th. Yeah, that sounds good. Other counselor reports? Okay, hearing none, work session requests.
We have one this morning. It's from Community Development. This is to discuss the fall 2022 biannual code update. I understand that most of the changes and recommendations are fairly minor and cleanups to code, but they would like to go over those recommendations with counsel during a work session. And then they will move forward with the process with the Planning Commission and then a public hearing for counsel's final action.
Sounds good, thank you. Are there other comments on that? Okay. Lindsay, policy issues? Do you have some for us this morning?
No, I don't, nothing further from me today, thank you.
Okay, very good. Well, now we move into three executive sessions in that event. One on collective bargaining for about 10 minutes. One on real estate authorized by RCW 4030, 110, Section 1B for about 15 minutes. And another on pending litigation, RCW .30, .110, Section 1I for about 10 minutes. We do anticipate about at least one potential after action from our executive session. And counsel will be present with us on all of these discussions. So let's see, what is that about? Let's say it's 30 minutes. We should be back by 12:10. How does that sound? We'll try our best and we'll take care of after action at that time. This meeting is held over until 12:10. See you then and see you now in executive session, counsel.
Hello, council is extending executive session for another 30 minutes and will now be returning at 12:40, thank you. We are extending executive session for another five minutes and the council will be returning at 12:45, thank you.
It is Wednesday, August 3. We are back in the council time following three executive sessions, one of which we have some after action. Is there a motion from counsel, please?
Madam Chair, I have a motion to approve the defense and indemnification for the individually named defendants in the Simpson versus Kinsey case.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion from counsel? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 I heard four votes, therefore that is a unanimous vote for approval. And given that, council time is now adjourned.